Are we all assembled here? All right. So, welcome. It's just shortly past seven o'clock. We had a little bit longer work session than we thought we'd have, but anyway, good work session. Welcome, everyone. This is the regular city council meeting for January 21st from Minatrista. First order of business, just a gentle or friendly reminder, please, if you have cell phones or electronic devices, put them on airplane mode, turn them off, or on silence so they don't disrupt our meeting. So again, welcome, everyone, and first, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, welcome, everyone, also to those of you watching on YouTube later on. First order, I'd like to make some introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan. I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, Mike Malater, John Trumperland, Shannon Bruce, and then on the end, sitting in for our regular engineer, this, a regular engineer, Allison Falsky is not here, so sitting in for her is Lee Gustafson this evening with WSB. Then we have our city clerk, Chris Lindquist, and on the end, we have our public works superintendent, Gary Peters. And then to my right are our city administrator, Mike Broney. Brian Grimm is our finance director. David Abel is our community development director. And then we have also sitting in for Ron Beatty this evening with Kennedy and Graven is Andrew Biggerstaff, our attorney. And then on the end, we have our chief of police, Paul Falls. So with that, is there, that concludes our introduction. So approval of our agenda. Is there, are there any changes, auditions? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Trumperland and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. Motion passes 5-0. So next, we have special presentations. We have none this evening. And persons to be heard, we have nobody signed up, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. And they consist of A, B, C, and D. That's approve our regular meeting minutes from January 6th, 2020. B is approve our claims. C is accept the quotes and award contract for the three-year by annual garage door maintenance inspections. And then D is a resolution to approve actuarial services with Gallagher Benefit Services for 2019 GASP compliance. Anybody need any of those removed?
A and C.
Okay, that would then remain B and D. Is there a motion, then, to approve claims? And then the actual, actuarial services?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Mortenson made that, and Ms. Bruce seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Trumperland?
In the minutes on, in the work packet, or the package on page six, under the public hearing, there's a word, I think, that needs to be added, unless I'm misreading. In the third paragraph where Christopher Dennis is speaking, the second sentence says, "He commented that the board does not the assessment for the outlaws to be assessed." I assume we want the word "want" in there. He commented that the board does not want the assessment for the outlaws to be assessed. Is that my recollection?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, kind of reading it, your mind says what it should be, but I thought maybe it should be in there.
My computer didn't catch either.
You can read those things 10 times. That was the only thing in there.
I'll make that correction.
Thank you.
Well, I just had one other thing under number, letter A also. On page five, under the local street improvement project, one of the bullet points towards the end, it says the assessment is based on 40 parcels. I think it's 38.
It started out with 40, and that's what I base my minutes on, is whatever they put in their staff report.
Okay. So did the dollar amount, though, reflect the 40 or the 38?
Forty.
The 40? Okay.
The primary residential unit assessment rate, that is based on that 40.
Okay.
So the minutes are correct. After the HOA had said that they wanted that assessment to be spread out over the homeowners association, that reduced the amount down to 38 parcels, and the one parcel was not going to be assessed for those two, so there'd be 37 assessed a certain amount, and then one parcel was going to be probably still assessed approximately, the 75, 87.
Right, and that reflected, that's reflected, Madam Mayor, under Christopher Dennis's comments, where that correction was, that council member Trumperland pointed out. It says that there'll be a remaining 37 units. We don't know what that cost is going to be, because nobody had that on hand.
These are estimates, yes.
Right, so that's, that's the reasoning for that.
All right.
Okay, then I'd also like to comment on this. Page seven, the last paragraph before item number seven, administrative items, says there was a brief discussion on if the bid comes back for the, for the street improvements lower than anticipated, the council should discuss choosing which roads will receive the extra lifts of the tumulus. My understanding and recollection of this is, this is, this discussion's not entirely contingent on the bids coming back. When we approved the levy on the roads, we've always talked about there's a capital component, and there's an ongoing maintenance. And what the mayor was referring to is which streets we choose for maintenance. So I don't think that this should state that it's a, if the bid comes back. We're going to have that discussion regardless of the bid.
We'll have it. But, so, if you recall, we had that list of streets that we were, I didn't know that those would be maintenance. I thought that was capital. I don't know that it matters, really, one way or the other, but...
Well, I guess my point is, is that this discussion on the street improvements, A needs to happen soon.
Correct.
But on, for the purposes of the meeting minutes here, it's not, it's not contingent on the bid.
Okay.
We can just take it out.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Well, I guess what you're saying is we'll have that discussion one way or the other?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, sure.
That was a little confusing to me as well, so.
All right.
I think the only thing contingent upon the bid is how many.
How much?
Right?
Maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, it could also go through the assessment process.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Okay, we'll...
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we...
Just, just take that last...
Take that out and add "does not want." That's the corrections that I'm going to make. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so with those corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes from...
Claims.
January 6th.
January 6th, yeah.
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. And Mr. Trumperland, you're on again.
This is probably a minor issue. I just wanted to be sure it was kosher. The bid, or the quote from Twin Cities, it's 11 doors, and they've been listed out, but of course, in the quote, they're just giving you a number, and their quote says 10. So I just didn't know if there's an issue with, it's actually 11, and Gary has itemized them out, but the quote from Twin Cities says 10. Estimate for periodic maintenance on 110 garage doors. So I just wanted to be sure there wasn't a legal issue or any kind of an issue here that we're expecting 11, and their quote says 10.
But we have a contract that they're going to sign.
I saw that below, but I just, I just wanted to be sure, just from my perspective.
What page of the packet is that?
Twenty-one. Their quote is on 21.
I can check with them on that, but I don't think that'll be an issue.
I was assuming that, but I didn't want to completely assume it all the way down the lines.
Good eyes.
Yes, small print.
Yeah, and our resolution doesn't specify the number of doors, so.
It just says 2,000 annually.
Does that, the contract states that...
But we do list them out.
We do list it out in the scope of the contract.
Right.
So they would have to sign that contract.
That, that's what I was thinking, again, but...
Okay.
Okay, that was just...
And I will touch base, though, before they, you know, before we sign everything. I'm sure. I don't think it'll be, the newest one we've added is the, we've never done the shed, the storage shed barn.
Right.
That's the newest one we've added, so I don't think it'll be an issue.
Okay.
Nice to get it locked for three years as well.
Right, at no increase.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so any other questions regarding that? So is there a motion, then, to accept the quotes and award the contract for the three-year by annual garage door maintenance inspections?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. A motion has been made by Mr. Trumperland, seconded by Ms. Bruce. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So we move on to our, we have no public hearings, so we move on to our business items. First business item is approve plans and specifications and authorize advertisement for bids for the 2020 MSA, or municipal state aid improvement project on Halsted Drive, which is going to be a mill and overlay. Mr. Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, before you tonight is a proposed resolution for your consideration, is with regards to the 2020 street improvement project on Halsted Drive. More specifically, it's a mill and overlay of Halsted Drive from approximately 135 feet west of Lakeside Drive to County Road 110, including some parking lot paving on the north side of the road. As indicated within your agenda packet, staff is recommending approval of this resolution. There are some fiscal impacts, which are the estimated cost of about 300, a little over $301,000. It's always nice to report, there are no assessments proposed for this project, and the bids will be open for this project on February 11th if this resolution is adopted. I'd be more happy to answer any further questions at this time, Mayor.
Any questions?
I have a question. On page 38, under fiscal impact, the second line, it talks about a 20% that, that the, the number above, the $301,000, includes a 5% construction contingency and a 20% indirect costs. Could you please explain what's included in the indirect costs?
Indirect costs are, it's, it's a common term that refers to the engineering administrative and costs usually associated with preparing plans and specifications, bid advertisements, and things like that.
So does that include the markup of WSB, WSB's markup on any of the contractors that they're using? Is that included in the indirect costs?
WSB does not have any markup in any of the contractors. This is bid out under the publicly bid process, which WSB has no control over. Obviously, the council would approve the little bidder. That would be, if it's a reasonable, responsible old bidder, the city council would approve it. WSB has no affiliation with that bidder and no marker.
Okay, so that it's just plans and specs?
That's correct.
It can be legal, it can be, if they need to do survey work, I mean, all of that, all of the soft costs.
Okay, anybody else have questions? Otherwise, is there a res, a motion to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bids for the 2020 municipal state aid street improvement project, Halsted Drive?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second has been made. Ms. Mortenson made that motion, Ms. Bruce seconded. Are there any further questions or discussion?
I do have one additional question.
Sure.
On the funding source, we're arriving at the 301. I get the Senator's source, the 1,600 for some sewer work. The 13,000, I assume that's out of our general fund, or our road fund, I should say. And why, is that just driveway stuff that's not included, or with the MSA, or why is that, what's it?
Mr. Gustafson?
Mayor and council member, typically with any state aid project, you're going to have what's referred to as non-eligible items.
Right.
And through the design process, there are, hopefully, most everything is, is eligible for state aid reimbursement. It, this, this item here could be anything referred to, as, the Senator's sewer funds are earmarked as a, as a special item, those are non-eligible items. There could be some drainage from a participating, or a joining, adjoining area that's not within the state aid right of way, that is a non-eligible item. So state aid has their worksheets that you go through for drainage. Typically, any of the road improvement, they're all, they're all included. So typically, local street improvement funds include those, as you, as you well know, those non-eligible items like drainage from, associated areas.
Sure.
It could even include, I'm just giving you some generic answers, but...
Sure. I get, I get the point. So I guess the reason, part of the reason I'm asking here is that we've got a, obviously, a very precise number listed here, which to me, kind of implies that there was some science of detailed items making this up. But what I'm hearing is that this is probably a percent of the overall cost, that you just kind of, you say, okay, the project's 301,000, we assume that wherever that is, it's a percentage. 1%, 2% is going to be, is that correct, or is there a specific?
Madam Mayor, Council, what this might be referring to is, we are planning on repaving the boat land, the boat launch itself, and adding the parking that is now gravel on the north side. And I think my conversations with Ms. Falsky about that is I do not believe that is able to be under the state aid.
Right, right.
So that's where this might come into, just because it is a, there is a substantial amount of paving, you know, for the, for both of those areas, that may come into play for some of that, too.
Like you said, it's just a very, you know, precisely listed number, so I just kind of thought, well...
Probably based on square feet or whatever.
It doesn't make sense to just pull it out there or something, so, okay, thank you.
Mayor and council member, it's, it's definitely not a percentage.
Okay.
It's not a percentage, so I can imagine, Gary gave you a great answer. It's my, my lack of knowledge of the project, but essentially, they would have taken all the quantities within that parking area. It's not a part of the roadway.
Sure.
So that's why it's so specific. It's, it's with regards to all the quantities that are in that parking area.
And again, these are estimates based on the...
Right.
So I have, yeah, I have one more question. I know we had talked about additional parking as, on that same side of the road as you go further west. Is there anything, has that ever been, I know that Chief and I, and we've talked about this...
That was supposed to be part of the Three Rivers Park District plan for that parcel.
No, it's, yeah, that, that's a whole nother subject. So along the road, along Halsted, beyond Lakes, Lakeview or Lakeside, we have too many lakes here, Lakeside Avenue or whatever, we had talked about, is there any way of adding a few extra stalls that would be on the north side of Halsted?
Madam Mayor, we did discuss that, Mr. Peters and I, and I think you looked at that area along with our engineer, and it, it didn't turn out to be a feasible option just because of the drainage and the, the grade there. So...
Okay, all right.
Basically, the short answer is no, we can't do that.
No. And then, so Mr. Malater, to your point, I actually talked to the Three Rivers rep, and, and I'll be meeting with her in April to show her what we've been talking about in terms of that property and maybe getting some more parking down there. It's not going to happen overnight, but I...
Oh, it wasn't expected.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're...
Right, yeah, okay. All right. So a motion was made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. I have to move back to my... So now we'll move on to our next business item, and that's approve our comprehensive plan update to the water supply plan. Mr. Gustafson, I believe that's you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item before you is a consideration of a, of a requirement that the DNR has noted within the water supply plan. As council is well aware, this is a part of your overall comprehensive plan review. And when the DNR reviewed the water supply plan, they noted that a monitoring well within the town, city, I'm going to screw this up, Gary, Wanawak Aquifer is needed. And as council is aware, from the information within your agenda packet, there used to be one there that, that was removed. The requirement from the DNR, I've, I've seen many, and this is actually fairly an easy requirement, minimal requirement, because it doesn't require you to do anything now. And it simply, simply is that in order to meet the DNR requirements, they're requiring that the city put a monitoring well in when a new city well is installed within that area. That's something that's, that's frankly always done when you, when you typically put in a city well. You have a monitoring well close by. So the city doesn't have to do anything right now. It's just a requirement when the city does do, you know, new potable city, city well in that area to construct a monitoring well, so the DNR can, so that actually Gary and his crew can monitor the drawdown, and that information can be passed along to the DNR. There is a, a little notation in all those pages in your agenda packet that has that little statement way on the bottom of that matrix, that has that requirement, or had that indication noted that the city would do that. I'm certain Gary has a lot of information on this as, as well, so if any, council has any questions, we'd be more happy to answer that.
I don't think we have another well planned for another several years. First, the water tower, and then eventually another well. I think it was in conjunction with the water treatment plant at that time.
Correct.
So we're looking at maybe 10 years down the line?
Schedule's like 2036.
Yeah, yeah. So it sits down the line ways. I just have one comment. In this plan, on page 120 and 121, there were numerous names and contact information that's out, quite outdated. So I don't know if you, if we should update those, or... So, for instance...
Do you know what page it is on?
Oh, it's, I don't know. It's in our packet on 120.
It's Penex 5.
They're numbered on the bottom of the actual report.
No, there is nothing on the bottom.
It's on Penex 5.
It just, it's...
Emergency telephone list.
Emergency telephone list? Just, I think if you just look it over, you'll see, like, it's, it lists the sheriff as Richard Stanek. That's old. It lists Kate Drury, I don't know that she's even with the DNR anymore. And then Joel settles with the county water planner. He's retired, he's been retired for a number of years. And then Rick Wybel is no longer the mayor of St. Bonnie. And Mark Wegshaid is not the mayor. So we just need those, I mean, if we're, I don't know, if it, if we are sending this in, we should probably update those. And I can get those to you, Gary.
We can, we can definitely get that updated.
Okay, it's just under, it's in our packet, it's on page 120 and maybe 121. Oh, and then also WSB, it lists Paul Hornby, and it's, it should be Allison Falsky. Okay, so just, just do that, all right. Any other comments or questions?
What, what page is the actual resolution on that we're passing? Does anyone know?
It could actually be the very last page of that, and so, maybe 143?
Thank you.
Maybe 143?
It's 140.
143.
So it says a resolution approving the Minatrista Water Supply Plan. It would be resolution number 010-2020. Any other questions? Hearing none, then. Is there a motion, then, to approve the, the comprehensive plan update to the water supply plan with the changes that I mentioned?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Mortenson made that motion, and Mr. Trumperland seconded that. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So C is our next business item. It's approve our professional services agreement for a traffic study for the 2021 Sunnyfield Road Improvement Project. Either Lee or, okay, Mr. Gustafson?
Mayor, I'll take this one as well. Thank you. As council, as council is aware, over the past year, staff and council have discussed potential street improvements within the city, more specifically on Sunnyfield Road. As, as council is also aware, this, this road bisects the West Tonka School District campus, and also that representatives from the school district have requested the city examine the feasibility of certain improvements on this roadway as a, as a part of this potential improvement. Those improvements would be something on the order of turn lanes, enhancements to, for, to facilitate pedestrian improvements, and I would say non-safety improvements such as on-street parking and curb and gutter. The first step in looking at the first two, the safety improvements for the traffic and the pedestrians, would be to initiate a traffic study of the project area to gather data, and that would help develop recommendations and cost estimates for the city council's consideration. The traffic study would include gathering traffic data within the project, project corridor, this is daily traffic counts, things like this, turning movement counts, and so on and so forth. Also, to work with the police department to collect and evaluate any accident reports. That would then identify alternatives to improve traffic operations. Next would be to develop a traffic model to analyze existing conditions in comparison to the alternatives that are being evaluated. The safety analysis would be done to rate the alternatives, both vehicles and pedestrians. And then finally, once everything is honed in as far as the alternatives, cost estimates would then be, would then be prepared for the various alternatives. The timeline for the project itself would be, tonight before you, is consideration of authorizing the traffic study. Approximately next August in 2020 would be, if everything goes according to the schedule that's within your agenda packet, you would consider a public hearing and authorizing the preparation of plans and specs. Then construction would, would be projected to occur in 2021, beginning in May, and hopefully ending in August. Public House would also be included as a part of the process. And before you tonight, Mayor, as you mentioned, there is a recommendation to approve a resolution authorizing the traffic study for Sunnyfield Road. With that, I'd be more happy to answer any questions you have.
Kind of for clarification, I think the school district was concerned if we started in May, so I think the construction was going to be starting in June because of the school then being out, so. And we discussed that with, I think, the school and with Allison as well, so. Just, I don't want people to panic that they're going to have a constructing project there right towards the end of the school season. Okay. Any, you want to add anything?
The only thing I was going to add, Madam Mayor and Council, is the school was willing, I mean, obviously, some of these items would be to help them flush out, you know, what the potentially would be, you know, beneficial for the, the site there. So they were willing to, to share in the cost of this traffic study. I think that was, you know, mutated in the draft.
And that's 50%?
Yep, 50%.
Is our expense with that, for the study, be MSA eligible, then?
I think if, once we got to an eligible project, so I think that was part of the reason we want at least them have a good faith effort of, you know, hopefully, something goes forward with this road, and as long as it gets to that point, we'd be able to reimburse that with MSA, which would be different than that, we had that north branch.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, then. Is there a motion to approve professional services agreement for a traffic study for the 2021 Sunnyfield Road Improvement Project to be paid 50-50 by the city as well as the school district?
So moved.
Okay, is there a sec, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Mr. Trumperland. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So next is business item D, is approve plans and specifications and authorize advertisement for bids for the Sunnyfield Water Tower Maintenance Project. We've talked about this before, but Mr. Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, before you tonight is a resolution that would approve the plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bids for the water tower rehabilitation project. As the mayor alluded to, this item has been discussed before you, and that agreement was approved for WSB, and that, that agreement assisted in preparation of the plan specifications for this rehabilitation project. As council is aware, the coating system has exceeded its life. There are some miscellaneous structural pick... There are some miscellaneous structural modifications and repairs that are, that are required. The estimated cost, you'll notice, within your packet is approximately 594,000. As, as indicated, we are recommending that you approve the attached resolution, approving plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement for bids. With that, Mayor, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any other questions?
When, when is the appropriate time to talk about how we're gonna pay for this?
I think we've always thought of paying it for out of our, our fund balance.
Well, and when, at the next work session, I think, I think this wraps into the whole, we have the, the new water tower, you know, on the horizon, and the bids are coming back on that on Thursday.
Correct.
Um, and I think originally we were just gonna do that, I think, late last fall, it's like, well, why don't we look at potentially doing that? So I, I think this would be as part of the overall global discussion, and we're gonna have Mr. Hagen out at the work session next couple Mondays from now.
So we'll talk about the pros and cons of bonding.
Yeah, in return, yeah, 'cause, I mean, I think in the past, I've made the recommendation that something like this maybe would be cash, or maybe you'd bond for the whole water tower, but that's a discussion, I think we're slated to have.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure we're gonna have that discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah.
So, correct, yep.
Okay. Okay. Alright. And I think we wanted to do the north water tower, so we didn't, weren't doing both of them at the same time. I think that was one of the issues. And we can't do the south water tower till we get the other water tower up and running, so that won't happen probably till 2022, or probably 2022 or beyond. Alright, alright. Good question. Anybody else have questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement for bids for the Sunnyfield Road Water Tower Rehabilitation Project?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we have one other item, that is the Mount Fire Department Advisory Discussion. So just for your information, we had, like I said, a lengthy work session talking about future budgets and, and things for the Mount Fire Department. I think we've kind of come to a, we don't need a, we don't have to pass a motion or anything. I think we gave, one, we gave our representative to the commission direction, and I think we also gave the chief of police direction to, in terms of, I, I'm sorry, fire, thank you. Too many chiefs. Just kidding. So, I don't know that we need to have a whole lot more discussion, but it was a good discussion, and I think a lot of information was shared, and good information for the council to have. Anything else?
And, Mayor and Council, just for the edification of all, all of the council members, so originally when we wanted to have this discussion, our goal was to have it at one of the two January meetings, because tomorrow was going to be the Mount Fire Commission meeting. Well, they've canceled that meeting, it's coming up in early Feb, but nonetheless, we're not gonna be able to go tomorrow if you were still thinking and remembering my comment that our goal was to be there ready for the 22nd, so it's either gonna be, I think, Wednesday, February 5th, or Wednesday, February 12th. They have not made up their mind, they've been pulling all the folks that attend that meeting, and I haven't heard a final answer on when the exact meeting will be yet, but it'll be one of those two days.
Sure. So we'll come back with more information.
Correct.
Alright, so moving on to staff reports. Mr. Broney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I just have a few items here to discuss. First one, just a quick update on the southwest water tower. So I did get an email late last week from Chad Katsberger from SEH, and he said plans and specs have been in the hands of potential contractors since before Christmas for the water tower, and it appears to him that there's three of the four major composite water tower contractors will be bidding on that project. That's their, that's what they think is gonna happen. Those bids are scheduled to be open this Thursday, the 23rd, and then they'll be assessing those and bringing back a recommendation for which particular company to go with. It's an update here on a couple of HR-related items. First off is our vacant police officer position. We did have 34 applicants for that one off, one police officer position last Thursday and Friday in the morning before the snow hit. We did have interviews, we interviewed 14 people. We've narrowed that down to three finalists, and those finalists will be in this Thursday, and those interviews will take place on Thursday morning. The other item is the replacement of Ms. Tabor for the Director of Administration. We did conclude our recruitment with 15 applicants for the position. We scheduled interviews again last week, they were going to be on Wednesday, the 15th in the afternoon, and then Friday, the 17th in the afternoon, and so we held the ones on the 15th, the ones on the 17th. We made a call, I made a call, on the 16th to cancel on the two participants that were coming on the 17th, were both coming from out of state, and I felt like it would be unfair to them to try to make a trek through that snowstorm, not, didn't end up being as much snow, but it was still fairly treacherous, so I think it was a good call. So we've actually rescheduled those interviews for this Friday, the 24th. We intentionally, we, we had decided that we're going to try to have final interviews the following Tuesday, but that's going to be too quick of a turnaround, so we'll probably end up having final interviews for this position sometime in early Feb, and I'll be consulting with city staff, the mayor, and, and Councilmember Mortenson on trying to find a date. It worked great for the 28th, but unfortunately, that's not going to happen. And then I was going to present an update to our work session schedule, but I'm still working on it, so I apologize not being able to get that to you. I'm gonna try to adjust a couple of dates, and I need to talk with a couple of, kind of principals or participants for those dates to make sure that we can get that going. So at the next council meeting on Feb. 3, I will have that, that particular schedule for you. So, there's a couple of things that have kind of come up recently that I wanna make sure that get covered in a more timely fashion, so I'll be making those decisions here in the, in the, in the next couple of days, and then again, I'll present that to council on the 3rd of February. So with that, Mayor, that's all I have for announcements.
Any other staff reports? Otherwise, we'll move on to council reports. We'll start with Ms. Bruce.
One of the things that I had discussed with Mr. Broney for a possible work session is to discuss the possibility of having a council committee on finance and budget, and that's, I just wanted, on the record, that, that we discussed that, and we'll be discussing whether or not there are members of the council who would like to be a part of that committee, or the council thinks it's a good idea to have a budget committee to look at the budget in more detail than we have in the past, that the council has in the past, and also to be given the budget in a format that is easily analyzed. We've never had the budget in Excel format, or the line item budget in Excel format, where we can actually sift and sort and really analyze it. And I was talking to our auditor, who talks to council members periodically, and some of you may have had a conversation with him before, this year it was my turn, and it was just a suggestion that I had, he seemed to think it was a good idea, he said he was gonna talk to Mr. Broney, Mr. Grimm about it. But having a couple of council members that just dig into the budget with a little more detail than we have in the past is what a lot of other cities do.
So you're asking that to be a, a work session agenda?
A work session, so we can talk about that.
Sure, we can, if you'll just put that on that list, and then come up with the time where we can discuss that, so.
And the other one is having a citizens advisory committee on technology. I think that's, as fast as technology is changing, I, I think we need other sources of information than what we currently have. I think there's a lot of savings and money to be saved by the city if, if we make some smart technology decisions going forward, and I'm not sure we have the expertise in-house to make those decisions, and I'm, would like to talk about having a citizens advisory committee on technology.
So that might be another work session?
Yeah. And I'll be volunteering for the polar plunge, not to jump in the water, but I'm helping register at the polar plunge on Saturday.
You sure?
I'm sure. That's all I have.
Mr. Trumperlin?
Pioneer Sarah Creek, last Thursday, we had a double meeting, we had the normal January meeting, and then followed that up with a kickoff meeting for the fourth gen plan. Diane Spector from Wink, who worked on the third gen, gave kind of an overview of what the third gen was and how it was approached. Fourth gen will certainly, will just be a refresh, won't be a rewrite. I think we learned, the commission learned a lot from building the third gen, which was only a six-year plan. This will be a 10-year. So over the next three months, we'll have a, a technical advisory committee meeting, a, hopefully a citizens advisory committee meeting, and then an open house. So we laid out also the, the calendar for it, and it's quite aggressive because it needs to be adopted by the end of this year. So, sounds like we'll be busy.
Alright. Thank you. Mr. Malater?
Uh, no, it is.
I saw that your replacement for the LMCD is going to be sworn in, and-
Sworn in this coming meeting.
Yes, okay, good.
Great. WCC meeting, I attended on the 9th, and the featured speaker was Dr. Jackie Pipecar, and she talked about the upcoming Lake Minnetonka Klondike Dog Derby. Sounds like a lot of fun, there are brochures out in the lobby. It starts on the 9th, it's actually one day, it's on the 9th of February, and there are things you can do on the 8th as well. It's start and finish on Water Street and Excelsior, and there are 40 teams participating, coming from Canada, Michigan, Minnesota, Wisconsin. It's very competitive, it's an eight dog sled races, 40-mile race, they expect 10,000 people there.
Wow.
Which is huge, it should be really fun. And if you need information, there is a website you can go to, and they are looking for volunteers as well. Dog Days is being scheduled in on August 8th in the Mount Bay Park, and estimated number of dogs is 1,000. And they need volunteers as well.
Two thousand?
A thousand.
That's still a lot of dogs.
Still a lot of dogs.
A lot of dogs.
And then, oh, I am meeting tomorrow to discuss pig races with our pig race committee.
Okay. And that's for Trista Day coming up in May?
Yes, Trista Day.
Alright. Just had several meetings, one with the school district to talk about the, the Sunnyfield Road Project. It was, I think, a very good meeting. We talked about a number of different things. And then I'll be working with staff, and as Pam will be doing those interviews, and had another meeting, too, I don't remember. But I have several meetings coming up this, this week, and I'll report back on those at our next meeting. That's, that's it. So that concludes our open session, so now we will be going into closed session, and unfortunately, I will have to ask all of you to leave. But thank you for coming, and I think everybody, staff is gonna stay.
Except for Mr. Gustafson.
Mr. Gustafson is leaving.
Mr. Peters, it cost you 10 bucks, Gary.
Alright, so we're back again. We're re-convening our regular city council meeting from January 21st. We just went into closed session, and we closed our closed session. It was attorney-client privilege, discussing-
Potential litigation with Ram Buildings.
At Ram Construction, alright. So with that, that concludes our meeting, and we gave staff direction, and with that, it concludes our meeting, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
Some moved.
Okay, a motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned.
Thank you.